Okay, I'd like to call to order the February 12th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Education at Monroe Middle School. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Boon.
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin is absent, Mr. Matheson is absent, and Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Okay, first is Pledge of Allegiance. I know we have a lot of special guests here, but I'd love to do a student. Charlie, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(audience cheering) (inaudible) United States of America, and a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, first, Senator Jennings Communications of the host school, Mr. Buck.
Good evening, thank you for being here. Pulling up my slideshow here. So the first picture we have here, and I tried to put in a bunch of pictures, is this is our 50th year here at Monroe, so we have already actually had our celebration, and those are our almost 800 kids out on the football field, doing a little 5-0, and so our band director did that, so we're excited that we have 50 years, and we're excited for 50 more. So what I'd like to talk about today is our advisory period. We have implemented an 18-minute advisory period every day, and wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. We're really excited about that. We're seeing some great results and some really good things for our school. So a little background on this is, in last March, we went to a ed camp, a lot of my teachers, and so we were sitting at lunch, and they said, you know, how are the middle schools? So was all middle schools, all these middle schools have an advisory, you know, have we ever thought about doing that? And I said, no, I've thought about it, you know, I've been a middle school principal for a long time, is that something that you would be interested in? And he said, yeah. And I said, do you think the staff would be interested in that? So, see, again, I think so. So I brought it back to kind of our instructional leadership team, and we talked a little bit about it, and so I went to each of our grade-level teams and kind of gave them a little synopsis of what an advisory could look like, and would they be interested in us, you know, looking at that? And they, all of them, and not really surprised, but at the same time, I mean, this is a, you know, a change in schedule and things like that, said, yeah, it really would be. So then I went to, you know, my bosses and said, hey, is this something that we could possibly do? And so with the help of Chris and Charlie and Jeff, they said, yeah, I think we should kind of look into that and see what that would look like. And so we dove in a little bit more and actually created a schedule that worked and found some resources, and so that's kind of what we implemented, and so I wanted to kind of talk to you about this. So a couple of the "why"s, and I've got four quotes here that I think are really good. Basically, you know, this one says that when kids have connected integration between teachers and students, their academics go up. So this is not just SEL, this is also academically, it's proven that when, and this is John Hattie, you know, Chris is smiling over there, this is John Hattie quote, you know, goes up, you know, two years, expected in one year of time, if we can get these connections. And so advisory is really all about connections. The next one, middle students who don't bond with their teachers are much more likely to feel discouraged, alienated with their peers, so again, more of the SEL than, you know, working with each other. Students feel their teachers care and support them through learning journey and are motivated to work harder. So again, we're doing some motivation. And the last one, also with teachers, you know, teachers' connections to their students lead to greater job satisfaction, higher effectiveness, feeling competency, and feeling of purpose. So it's a win-win for the entire building, for the teachers, for the kids. So what we did was we piloted a nine-week, and so that's kind of got the approval, is, hey, let's try this for nine weeks, we see how it goes. So we piloted for nine weeks, after three weeks, we took a survey with our teachers, after six weeks, we took a survey with teacher and students, and after nine, we did the same thing. And all of those surveys came back very positive, that teachers really enjoyed it, that students really enjoyed it, and so, you know, we presented that to the, you know, powers that be here in the room, and they said, hey, let's, you know, try it for the rest of the year and see how it goes. So we have been, and we are using the resource called Second Step, and so Second Step is a great resource, has lots of videos, kind of timely information that we love. So, this is the fun part of my presentation now. So Mrs. Clank is one of our math teachers, who's here with that, Mrs. Clank? And I asked her, you know, talk to your kids, like, you know, I have to present this in front of the Board of Education, like, about advisory, like, can you, like, you know, give me some information? Thinking, like, I was just gonna talk to them. So they created a PowerPoint, so this is, I'm gonna say 90% of them, I made a few grammatical errors, I didn't make that, like, correct to them, but other than that, it's pretty good, and I'm sure you'll probably still see some. So this is what they said. So we asked them, what is advisory? So they said, it's the first two minutes every day, it's a relaxing, and I actually left this in there because I love the zeroing, zeroing period, a time to reflect on your day, your week, and your weekend, a time to get to know your peers, and help them both in and out of school. So that's what our seventh graders say. Who are we? We're seventh graders, we're Clank's crazies, we're weirdos, we're incredible, I mean, think of a seventh grader saying that, we're incredible, we're unique, we're special. And you can see the little picture there, just one little kind of blue dot. So Second Step has units, and so there's a mindset unit, values, thoughts, emotions, and in these units, there's multiple lessons in there, and so, so that's me again, that's not them. So here's back to them, you didn't want lesson one mindset, you know, welcome to analysis. This is where we learn how to control our 13-year-old minds. The brain grows and changes, and we have to understand it, right? I mean, can you imagine, like, a 13-year-old saying that? I was like, oh my gosh, this is awesome. So what's in the middle schools, part of it, you know, what do we learn in middle school? We gotta learn to help others. One of the things, we never see this, remember, this is sixth, seventh grade, we never see the sixth graders, how can we help them, you know, transition into the, into middle schools? You know, we need to be nice to each other, we need to stop others who are bullying, we need to be able to make short-term, long-term goals, and then the time to make mistakes. It's a good thing, because you can learn from them, you know, that grit and mindset that we talk about, it's a good thing, because you can learn how to not make them again. And again, some school challenges, how do we get to be a better school? How can we stop rework behavior? How can we stop bullying? How can we get our school better? And these are all things that they're talking about and sharing with their advisory teacher. Some personality changes, you know, how can you change to help our school? How can you learn from our mistakes? How can you fix my grades? How can I make more time to study for tests? Do I need to ask for help? So these are all things in advisory that they're talking to their other students in advisory, but also their teacher. So we do some different, like, team building activities too, so they did a marshmallow challenge, and so Lexi Anne and Kia did a 57, and so here's some of the pictures of them kind of doing that, and you can see, what I notice in this picture is they're all smiling, right? I mean, you'll see a lot of these pictures, like, you can imagine, this is eight o'clock in the morning, middle school kids coming and smiling like that, that doesn't always happen, and so we really think it's a good thing. So that's our team building. So then the next unit, we talk about is values and decisions, and so your values, what you believe in, help you make decisions. If you don't realize or think about your values, it's gonna be harder to make good decisions. And I didn't switch any of that, I mean, that's a 13-year-old kid thinking about these things. Online values, so they know, I mean, they talk about going online, that's obviously one of the huge parts of their life. It's important to know who you are, who you are with when you're online. If you don't, you know, if you're not careful, you can end up being someone who you don't want to be. And then friendships, talk about friendships, keep friends, you have to treat your friends the way you would like to be treated. You wanna keep good friends, you have to treat them nice. You can't treat your friends like trash and talk behind their backs, they won't be your friends to you. Friendship challenge, you wanna keep your friends after a party, you might have to work hard again to change, to gain each other's trust. You may not like one of your friends, you may not like one of your friend's friends, and that's okay. So we also have check-ins, and so what they like about a check-in is, I like, you know, not going straight to class and being able to start the day. I was actually just talking to a parent here today of one of our students, and that was one of the things that they said, it's just, you know, to jump right in at eight o'clock and do math or do science, like, this gives them a nice transition to be able to kind of start your day. They love being part of a team, they love to know that one adult has my back. That's all we want, I mean, that's what we want from this, and that's what we want from SEL in general, is like, to know that an adult has your back. I like talking about topics we have in class, I like how we get to calm down, it's not a class, you need to get grades, it's a good time to relieve stress, and knowing you're not gonna get a grade. Connections and friendships, I like that I have a positive relationship with one of my teachers, if I go to Mrs. Clank's math class and I have no clue what she's talking about, I have a positive relationship with Mrs. Clank, where I can go and ask her for help, and she might teach in a different way. And I mean, they're right, this, the goal of advisory is to build a positive relationship with at least one girl from the building. And so here, I just kind of explained some of the different things that we're doing, and I'm just gonna explain some of the pictures. So this was the chain challenge, they got a piece of paper, and they had to make the longest chain possible with the materials they had. So they had to obviously think and problem solve, and then, you know, use each other to do this in an 18-minute period. Other activity we've done is a building, so this is not just Mrs. Clank, this is our building. So during Thanksgiving time, we had a door decorating contest, and it's hard to see, I know this, but, you know, there's all quotes going, you know, be grateful, not hateful, you know, be thankful for all, let, let's lift each other up, you know, with the balloons, so that was one thing. They did Friendsgiving, and I love this, 'cause like, you would be amazed, like, middle school kids, they don't talk to each other anymore, they text, right? And so to actually have, sit in front of somebody and have a conversation, and have questions that you're gonna ask somebody and have those conversations, and then kind of have a little party after is something that we really think is a good thing, and you can see good smiles there. Part of our 50th celebration is we got this little eagle, and we named him, and so we had a naming contest, and Jimmy Talon is the name of our new eagle. And then we also had here some team building, this is our entire sixth grade, rock, paper, scissors contest. Christmas sharing, we probably had the most amount of Christmas sharing, and I was talking, and I said, why do you think that is? And they said, 'cause we talk about advisory, we talk about hitting about people that really need this, and why do they need this, and what you can do even if you don't, you know, bring money or these things, what can you do to help others? And we got a ton of stuff. And this is actually what we're doing now, I don't know if you saw the story in the news, but 104-year-old Army veteran was asking for Valentine's Day cards, and so we have all of our advisories writing this gentleman a Valentine's card, and so I added a couple of those there, that hope you have a great Valentine's, I'm a student at Monroe, thankfully you served, our school is actually named after James Helen Monroe, who served as well, covered a grenade so others wouldn't die. I love that you serve our country, I always wondered how scared the world was to us, I hope that you have a nice rest of your day. And so, you know, we always try to bring back our Medal of Honor and some of the values that we're proud of for our school, and so that is what we're doing. Again, and without an advisory program, these kind of things, they wouldn't be able to do it. Any questions?
Questions from the board? This is awesome, awesome story, and thanks for sharing all that good work that our kids are doing.
Thanks.[786.11][786.11](applause)
Now, the next, can the board members have any modifications to the agenda we have tonight? All right, next, it's kind of a new feature that we have elevated up to the front of our agenda, which is recognitions and achievements. It's an opportunity for board members to kind of celebrate some of the accomplishments of our students, we might have come to know about over the last month, so, and it opened it up for board members to share some great stories of success.
I'll start. So I had two things to share, I went to first grade math night at Bauer, this is our second time of doing it, there were about 80 people there, it was amazing, parents, grandparents, siblings, it was a hands-on math time, and what was really exciting was, every child went home with some math games to do, the PTA helped supply some, a deck of cards to do some math games, there was some dice in there, and so it was really great that they could extend that to people home, but it was a huge success. And then, Whittier's one of my adopted schools, and I was invited by their math coach to come and shadow her for a class period, Megan Bolshum, and so I went and had her to a second grade classroom, Mrs. Stroudston's room, and they were doing their activity, and the activity was gonna spill over into the next day, so I said, ooh, I would really love to be able to see what's happening, so they sent me videos and pictures of their thinking that they did to complete the lesson, and I thought that was really cool to be able to, to see, to see how they finished. But it was also great to see, we hear about math coaches, but to actually see what they're doing in pushing into a classroom and developing all the language skills, and that was really, really good to see as well, so.
Great.
I have a couple, I visited Weasbro, Weasco, and their after-school program, they have, their kids are preparing for the Science Olympiad, it's something that they, it's grades three through five, and the kids really look forward to doing it, to getting into third grade, so they can do this program, and they have 90 kids, which I thought was a lot in the program now, maybe twice a week, and they were preparing, I'm sorry, I write on the date, I think it was last weekend, was their state competition, where they get in their groups and they prepare for a certain challenge, and one of them was about anatomy, and it was just, they just know it's gonna be about the skeletal system, but they don't know exactly what it's gonna be until they get there. They had a parent who's a doctor, who was mentoring the kids and preparing, you know, teaching them all about skeletal system, so they can be prepared, and another group was creating catapults, that they have to hit a target, or they have to build a boat that can hold so many pennies and things like that, and it was just, it was really great to see the kids so engaged after school, and all the parents that were there, you know, helping the kids, so that was, that was really great to see. And then, the second one is for, the third year now, I, Whittier started their incubator program again, and I'm being a mentor there again, and we had our first meeting last week, and it's always so great to see how excited all the kids are to do this, and to think, you know, they, all we're supposed to do is kind of get to know each other, and they're like, this is the product we wanna make, you know? And so, like, hold on, you know, so, so it was just really great to see how excited they were, and they were asking who the, maybe their sharp team, who the sharp team, they were a little nervous about the superintendent coming, and, he's really nice, and you're looking for a clearance from Dr. Salagi, so, so anyway, so those were my two.
I have a announcement to share, that the Wheaton North South Tigers speech team won the regional championship recently, and if my memory serves me correctly, this is usually coming up about the Tiger that they have the state championship, so I'm guessing that they're gonna have a good showing there as well, but that's exciting.
So I have a couple, the Wheaton Waves, which is the boosters for Wheaton North, they have a fundraiser at the end of January, last year I was at Wheaton Bowl, but Wheaton Bowl not being there, I was at Aurelio's, so while the attendance was down, they still raised almost $10,000 with Simon auction in Super Bowl Square, so that was successful. Also impressive was the number of Wheaton North staff that came to support the event, I thought that was really good, there's probably several, a dozen, so that was good. I attended the marijuana workshop, that was, I went to the one that was at North, that's part of curriculum night, so it was, you know, educational. Several of us attended the Alice workshop last night, which was, was good, and I met with my teacher group in the past month, and they had, there was a topic that came up, and they asked, we get trained? So that really instigated, well, I should at least go learn a little bit more about that, so that was good. Couple comments from the teachers that I thought were good and worth sharing, they all commented on the pace of change, and just how much it is, so they weren't necessarily complaining, and I think, I think they found it exciting, but, you know, it's not, you know, teaching, next year they teach the same, the same. They talked about a little, a little bit about Alice, and a comment came up about kindergarten grading, I guess is the only grade that's not online, so that's, you know, I think it was the teacher that probably administrated it, thought it would be a little easier. And then I also have one, there was a IIT, Illinois Tech Innovation Challenge, it was for the incubator program for high schools, and Wheaton North team won second prize, so they got $1,000 towards their project, and each student received a $25,000 per year scholarship if they go to IIT, so.
So I have two, actually, first one, we received an email from one of our teachers at Franklin, Dan Nielsen, who is a troop leader for a group of students who are Boy Scouts and that have achieved their Eagle Scout ranking, and he shared that nationally, only 4% of the boys that start Scouts earn this honor, and they always executed this, they did a major service project, they did ones that benefit disadvantaged students and aspiring runners, one was in Belton Park District, a church and schools at Jefferson, and, and even probably more importantly, one of those, well, I mentioned the names, that's David Anderson, Tyler, I can never read these names, Belmont, Michael Larson, Ethan Sang, Alex Gazarek, Connor Shrigley, and Louis Nielsen were the students. One of those students went to District 200 through elementary and middle school, is now a funded academy, but I wanna highlight, is it Ethan Sang, I believe, yes, who applied his training in the Boy Scouts and helped deal with a medical emergency at Wheaton North South last week, so it's great to see what they apply in life to real, real situations. The other thing that I probably would do later, but I wanna say when there's more people here.[1245.73][1245.73](laughter) It's really just a recognition, so last night Jenna, Susan, Dave, and I were at the Alice training, and I wanna acknowledge Dr. Kyle for all the work he's done. It's clear that this has become a passion of yours, and all the work you've done, and the partnerships you've built, have been tremendously important, tremendously important for our staff and our students, so I just wanna acknowledge all your hard work, and thank you for the work you do.[1273.54][1273.54](applause) Next is public comments. I think I saw somebody, where's Erica?
She's coming up.
I don't think her.
There's.
Yeah.
Sure?
Not on agenda.
Not on agenda, so, correct.
No public.
No public comments on agenda items, okay. Next is our superintendent report, Dr. Schiller.
I'm looking at the, I think, I think the person signed another list.
Spanish, okay, so it does apply to our agenda. Okay, so, we do have one comment on an agenda item, so here's where I get to read my introduction to this. Public comments are valued and important, board members, we welcome the opportunity to listen to the concerns and issues that are important to our community. Please be aware that it is a board's practice not to directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. We are here to listen, lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. In addition, to preserve confidentiality, the board and its president reserve the right to request that items related to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board, the board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting, please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, say your name and address your comments to the board, please limit your comments to three minutes. Mrs. Crabtree, will be timing the comments tonight, and raise your arm as the time limit is approaching. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your manner needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's next chance to chat, which is on April 7, I believe that's at Wheaton North High School.
Correct.
Or present your comments and write them by email to the board. We have one comment from Rachel Batista?
Batista.
Okay.
It's actually, it's on the Spanish language parts, but I know that's a presentation, I think, later today, so I didn't know if I, if it's now or after. At least it's not an agenda item, 'cause I saw that.
No, it's, yeah, that's fine, come on, do it.
Okay, so again, Rachel Batista, and my commentary is regarding the Spanish language arts program. So it would be great to see a lot of the progress, I attended the actual respected meeting, which helped introduce a kick-off exploratory committee to look into what kind of options exist, and I've also been very thankful to Melissa Murphy, who has been so kind and willing to, willingness to sit with me and share the progress that the team and the community has today. And I can say, I can sneak peek into the presentation today, and the conversation, though a lot of great progress has been made, and I recognize that a lot of this exploration was primarily in a reaction to the new ISPE standards, and therefore, a lot of what's been explored is designed with the Spanish bilingual students, or students whose first language is Spanish in mind. However, you know, my commentary is more encouraging the board to not ignore the opportunity that these new standards present in enhancing the education of all District 200 students, including the native English speaking students. And in the presentation that I know, I'm not sure if Melissa will go through later today, but I know a lot of the options presented currently list native English speaking students at final school sites as a consideration. And again, I recognize that it's first and foremost that we read the standards and programs are implemented, are implemented with the Spanish speaking students in mind, but again, I'd ask the board and exploratory committee to go a step further, and really consider looking to make this available, or these types of programs available to all students district-wide. I am a multilingual person, and I can speak to the benefits of knowing multiple languages throughout my education, as well as throughout my professional career. And I took perspective meeting, the profile the student will share, and stated that the purpose of the District 200 schools is to provide an education, so that when students leave, they impact the world by contributing to society and the economy, they're prepared for college and career, and for future challenges. And again, I can speak to that, how much knowing another language has helped my own academic and professional career, and more importantly, how often these types of programs will better enable our students to achieve the goals of this profile of a student. Other than Green District, Sclamal, Alker, Stateville, Lombard, Dunkers Row, Westmont, Windale, they've already realized this opportunity, the importance of offering other language programs in schools, and as a result, they have these programs available to both spoke bilingual and native English speaking bases. And I think that it's important that District 200 also looks at implementing similar programs, so that way, we can remain, our students can remain as competitive when they, along with their careers academically as well as professionally, so.
Thank you very much. Next is our superintendent report, Dr. Schiller.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Paulson, just a couple of things that I wanted to share and ensure for tonight, a couple of things that actually are on my list have already been, been mentioned, so I won't go significantly further into detail, other than to say this month has been a busy month in terms of community engagement opportunities in District 200, I think, as I tallied them up, we've welcomed hosted more than 600 community members across all of the events that we've had, started with the two nights with Matt Quinn, that raised some awareness around marijuana, the dangers of marijuana and vaping for kids, we did that especially in light of the new law change after January 1st, and wanna just continue to raise awareness and information, I thought Matt did a really excellent job of doing that. I wanna thank our PTA council that sponsored for us the showing of Screenagers 2, that was last week at the Studio Movie Grill, and theater was still at Studio Movie Grill, was a great opportunity for the community to not only see that movie, but then we hosted a talkback session that was moderated by somebody that's worked with the district before, I'm just facilitating a question and answer again, great night, and then a couple of board members mentioned the two Alice sessions this week, so I appreciate you. Recognizing and thanking Charlie, this is like, you know, 93 in a row for Charlie's, he's worked through the Alice pieces, but, but he certainly has really invested a lot of time and energy, actually, he has, has the safety committee that's really embraced that as a, as a community, I've been here with PTA council this morning, one of the conversations we had with council is that our first responders, Wheaton Police Department, Warrenville Police Department, Winfield Police Department, really have embraced Alice as a community initiative, it really is about bringing about practices and opportunities that, that really anybody in the community can, can implement, and I, and I think that that community wrap around that opportunity is really important as we continue, obviously our lens is we wanna keep those in our schools safe, but I think there's, there's broader impact, so again, I do appreciate everybody that's partnered with us on that. Wanted to mention or share with the board that as of last night, we put in a little extra effort at one of our elementary buildings, but all of our schools have hit the requisite participation mark for us to get data out of the Five Essentials Survey on the Parent side, that's always the most difficult target to hit, and 20%, but we are there across all of our schools now as of last night, so we look forward to that data. And then the very last thing that I just wanted to mention, we shared it this morning at PTA council as well, is, so... so Jefferson Early Childhood Center is, is a program that obviously is serving some of our students that need early intervention across the district. In order to do that, in the least restrictive environment, we do have some tuition spots that are available across our, our community. So, one, this is an advertisement. Feel free to share it with anybody that you will not find a more qualified preschool staff than what you're going to find at Jefferson Early Learning Center. But, again, that is also to make sure that we provide that opportunity, certainly in the, in the most appropriate environment for our students. And, to move, it's going to be a brand-new building, so you can find a better facility as well. So, please spread the word around that. We look forward to filling those spots this year.
Thank you. Any questions for board members? Okay, next is our consent agenda. We have 15 items on the consent agenda tonight. Read them off. Number one is acceptance of gifts from Lowell Elementary School PTA. Number two is acceptance of gift to Monroe Middle School PTA. I'm sorry, acceptance of gift to Monroe Middle School. Number three is approval of revised policy 5.50 drug and alcohol-free workplace e-cigarette, tobacco, and cannabis provision. Number four is approval to post business education textbook for community review. Number five, approval to post my perspectives English Language Arts textbook for community review. Here's where I get to practice my foreign language. Number six, approval to post Yandit Level 3 textbook for community review. And, number seven, approval to post Aceh C D C Level 3 textbook for community review. Number eight, approval to post housing interior textbooks for community review. Number nine, approval of changes in student handbooks. Number 10, approval of SIP phone agreement with call one. Number 11, approval of open, to open previously closed minutes. And, number 12, approval of settlement and mutual release. Number 13 is approval bills payable on payroll. Number 14, approval of minutes, January 8, 2020, open and close, January 22, 2020. The committee will open. And, approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to September 2018 as allowable by law. And, number 15, approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified classified non-union staff. That's the big one tonight, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thought so. Any questions for board members, or anything we want removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Any information to share, Dr. Schiller?
Just a couple of special introductions that the board will be approving here in just a few moments. We've got lots of guests here, and I think that's an incredibly positive sign of both the support and the great opportunity that we have. I'm actually going to start these introductions with, again, a thank you. So, we've got two incredibly talented, dedicated educators that are going to be retiring at the end of this year. Dave Claypool at Wheaton Memorial South, and as affectionately called him, Mr. Sandberg, here in the main end at Sandberg Elementary School. And, so, thank you to Dr. Kyle and Dr. Slaggy, who led those interview processes. I think the two individuals that have been introduced to the community and to the board will attest that we put them through the paces in the interview process, because we absolutely wanted to make sure that, that we had the right leaders, but also we had the right fit for the culture of those two buildings. And, so, Dr. Slaggy and Kyle led phenomenal interview processes, incredible interest for those, those positions. And, so, I'm pleased this evening to introduce Mr. Scott McDermott, who's been recommended as the new principal at Wheaton Memorial South High School. And, Mrs. Stacy Bailey in the Mac, who is going to be. This piece to know, like, you can't get much more of a connection, I don't think, to Sandberg Elementary School. For Stacy, she was a student at Sandberg Elementary, she's a parent at Sandberg Elementary, and now she will be the principal of Sandberg Elementary. And, so, Stacy, welcome home. I will say to you and Scott, well, Scott comes to us from District 214, Prospect High School, brings an incredible wealth of experience. So, I am, I am pleased and without reservation recommend to the board that you approve that personnel report, those two hours tonight.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members on agenda items? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hudson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda as presented passes. Welcome and welcome back. So, usually I would do this early, but for all the people who are here to welcome our new principals, feel free to go beat the snowstorm and take care of other things should you feel necessary. Next on our agenda is the policy posting consent agenda. We have 33 items tonight on the policy posting consent agenda. These are all kind of driven around legislative changes that has been brought to us through our press policy. And, our HR policy committee has reviewed all of these policies. So, I'm going to read this a little bit differently tonight, just out of the nature of time and my voice. So, all 33 of these, we are approving to post for public review and comment. I'm not going to read all the names of them, which are posted on our public agenda, but I will read the numbers, just kind of into the record. So, 33 policies. Those would be 2.20, 2.70, 4.15, 4.30, 4.60, 4.80, 5.10, 5.20, 5.30, 5.90, 6.20, 6.60, 7.20, 8.30, 2.100, 2.105, that's one page, 2.110, 2.200, 2.220, 2.260, 4.150, 5.100, 5.120, 5.200, 5.220, 5.250, 5.290, 5.330, 6.150, 6.300, 7.1500, 7.180, and 7.270. Are there any of these policies the board board members will want removed from this agenda? Dr. Schiller, any comments on this?
No additional comments on, on specific policy, other than to, I just want to remind the board that your HR policy committee did spend considerable time going through all of these changes, making sure you understood the rationale behind the changes. So, as we go through an update from, from press, all of the policies that you see in redline version with your board agenda, you also have supporting materials that really articulate what the specific change in law or school code was that brought it out. All of the opportunities, again, as Mr. Paulson mentioned, most of these are a result of just shifts in new law. Few of them were a result of just best practice edits from the team of attorneys that works on this. So, all are recommended for, for the board's approval this evening. I do want to mention just one, one other specific thing. Susan had asked a question, I think, at a, at a previous meeting about one of our policies where an item was dropped off of that policy in a previous edition that, that had to do with civic and civic engagement as a, as a goal. Policy committee did review that suggestion as well. Their thought was, we are, that we are adopting one of the policies this evening that has a very specific statement about civics being introduced and taught now, not only at the high school where it's required, but at the middle school level. And, they felt like that really was even more laser pointed on, on that, that topic, that that gives us clear direction as to what to do. So, I think the thought was, not because it's not an important topic, but it's probably better identified there. And then, obviously, Teaching and Learning Committee has, has that new requirement is met at the middle school level. We can certainly share with you how we're doing that. So.
No, I, I was going to wait till we got to the report there. But, no, I was just going to say, thank you. I appreciate you, the committee reviewing that. And, and I agree with the decision. And, I didn't know that was coming down. And, and I saw it when I was reading through, and I was really excited about this. So, yeah, so I, I think that's, that was correct. And, I think, I mean, you have seen, you know, as we've explained, we, as board members can send questions to the superintendent, and he, he responds. And, I think you can see, I do really read these very closely. And, I, I guess I just, you know, want to understand why things are removed. Sometimes, you know, I'm not saying that there's not a reason, but sometimes it's not clear what that reason was. And, and I just like to understand, you know, when certain things are removed. So, so I appreciate you taking the time to look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add that we did spend a good little time in our last meeting discussing that specific policy and the question that you had raised, and went around it a whole bunch of different ways. And, I think one of the things I really appreciate about the press plus process that we're now involved with is that it's helped us stay focused. And, there's usually pretty much always a really good reason why they're recommending what they're recommending. And, sometimes it is tightening things up and making sure that we're not being redundant. So, if we have something covered in one place, we're not covering in six other places as well. And, that, yeah, tightens it all up. And, it felt like we were, we were taking that into consideration where civic language shows up in the rest of the policy. I just think we're proud of it.
Yeah, no, and I, like I said, I agree with that decision. So, with that addition to, I can't remember which one, which policy it was, but, yeah, I agree. So, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, just a couple of questions on policy. So, 6.300 about the FASPA. I really liked, and I understand that that's, I think, three states have made that mandatory. I just want to know, having completed a FASPA, a student cannot do that. So, how are we going to be checking since it's a graduation requirement? I just wanted to know what that process is going to be to make sure that that was completed. Because really, it's falling on the parents to be able to do. So, that's my, my first one. And then, 8.30 talks about visitors showing identification when entering buildings. And, as far as I know, we only have to do that at the high school level. So, to have that in there, are we going to be now implementing showing identification?
8.30?
8.30, I thought it was.
Fourteen.
It, it, it talks about when you enter a building, you, you show identification. I believe we only did have the high schools. So, if we're going to have that in there, I just feel like definitely need to. Oh, and the civics one, what grade are we going to be doing that in? Middle school? Have we got, do we know yet?
Yeah. Let's go ahead.
We're starting preliminary conversations around that curriculum design with our middle school folks and our high school department chairs are also a part of that conversation. And, so, we're looking at eighth grade, but it's possible it could be at some other grades. But, we're just starting preliminary curriculum work. So.
Right. And, you can answer those later.
Yeah, and the, the FASPA thing, so you're right, Illinois is one of the few states that requires it now. That was certainly an interest of the governor. And, seeing that that legislation got passed, and we've actually got a team, Dr. Kyle's been working with one of our principal collaborators, that really is looking at closing that post-secondary gap. That is an identified strategy that certainly supports helping students that may not otherwise secure that opportunity for post-secondary. It helps them to, to do that. So, the concept, the principle, the research base that's behind that is certainly, for, for some students is there. The how we're going to track that, we're going to have to, to figure that out. There are some outs within the language in that law that, that, that actually allow if, if a student just chooses not to, there's a, there's a, there's a waiver that a parent can seek with the school. It's not a formal process where they can wave out of that opportunity and not fulfill it. So, I, I don't foresee a point in the immediate where we would really be withholding a diploma from, from somebody around that requirement, but we're going to have to work on that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented?
So.
Moved by Mrs. Booten?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hudson, please call the roll.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the policy posting consent agenda is approved as presented. Next is a couple of oral reports. First up is student learning.
Okay, thank you. So, I actually have two pieces of information for you tonight. First is the information, there's a handout in your packet around our Title I extended day programming. And, so, this is just a quick update for you on the program that we offer at our seven elementary buildings that are Title I. And, this on beginning of January. And, so, it's an extended day program. Our students stay after school, work with teachers at their building. They get additional support in the area of math. We're often working with our students that are in third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, sometimes second grade. And, we utilize the grant plans to provide transportation, teachers' diapers, and also snacks for our students. So, we're very appreciative of the opportunity that we can provide our students, but also the fact that our own teachers are working directly with our students for this opportunity. So, any questions?
Are you having the disputation that you were looking to see, and how do you go about getting that disputation?
Sure. So, we have a large number of students that are enrolled, and it's been pretty consistent in numbers the last few years. So, we are happy with that. We have 354 students that are, or, yeah, 354 students that are enrolled. So, we're very pleased with that. And, each school works to recruit students in different ways. So, those are conversations between the teachers and the students that are recommending for that program. Okay. So, the second item that I have for you this evening is an update on our foundation of skills curriculum work that we're doing. And, I'm actually going to be inviting Sean Walsh to come on and join me. If you remember, Sean is the principal of Monroe School, and he's also a part of the Ed Services Department this year. He's serving at, also half-time as a director of instruction for elementary and middle school. And, he's been taking the lead on the work in reading and also social studies. And, so, he has been working on our foundational skills curriculum work. I'm going to just go to Sean.
Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. Good evening. Glad to be here this tonight, and I had a chance to talk literacy and foundational skills. So, I'll just walk you through this presentation. I'll walk you through our presentation here and give you a little bit of an update. Some of the slides you'll recognize from earlier in the year, but I just thought it'd be a nice way to kind of bring it forward. I know it's been since September or October, since you saw an update on foundational skills. So, the first piece I wanted to draw your attention to is just the vision 2022, the connection there. You can see the eye of the day there is talking about wanting to work on literacy skills, developing those experiences in the classroom for all students to make sure they have those developed, to create that need to learn throughout the day. And, you can see down here that we're specifically, this evening, talking about foundational skills in grades K through 1. We'll talk a little bit more about that. You've seen this as well before, but just again, bring it back here. This just gives you kind of a working document here of the work of the Ed Services Department and all the different things that are going on. And, you'll see that for this year, foundational skills is under the research and development area there. And, actually, by the end of this year, we're working with some of that moving into partial implementation. So, what are the foundational skills? And, so, we have, you can see up here, there are four as a demo product, through the Common Core State Standards. And, so, first we'll see up there is print concepts. And, when we're talking about print concepts, specifically, we're talking about just really recognizing features of print, all the things that you or I might take for granted right now. all those things that you or I might take for granted right now. But really, taking a look at text layout, so we'll get the top of the page, the bottom of the page, the front of the book, the back of the book, things like that. Just the idea of moving from left to right as you read with that sweet motion going down to the next line. Again, common sense to us, but something we wanna make sure our students understand. And even to the point of letter formation. So those are some of the things we're talking about with print concepts. Phonological awareness is really just that oral piece of hearing, identifying, then the self-being able to manipulate those sounds orally. So you can see a lot of that, donkey rhyming, elaboration, being able to hear syllables in the words and things like that. And then move to phonics and word recognition. Phonics is really where we take that oral knowledge of the sounds and apply it to print, so they can really see the connection between that letter and that sound, and then they can use that to form words. And word recognition, word study, really that vocabulary, is in taking and making meaning of those words. And then finally, fluency is just putting that all together so that they can read accurately and efficiently with expression, so they can really comprehend the text. This is our reading, our current reading framework for District 200. As you can see here, it knows it's just a model for organizing all the information here. You'll see that it also provides guidance, such as some instructional components as well. But really, what I wanna call your attention to is this top right here, where you'll see some of these foundational skills listed. And that really is the work of this year, which is to really talk about how can we ensure explicit intentional instruction in a consistent form across all of our grades, across all of our classrooms, and across all of our facilities. So that's really the discussion that we're having around foundational skills. It's a refresh to make sure we have that consistent application in the classroom. So we talked a little bit about why K1 this year here. And we'll take a look here as the standards work. Print concepts and phonological awareness are really something that we wanna ensure is solid. You'll see here by the end of first grade, prior to going into second grade. So to the right, then, you'll also see that tier pyramid. We're talking about MTSS. And really, what we're focusing on right now is ensuring that consistent instruction in Tier 1. The instruction strategies, methodologies, materials where they're needed, and the assessments that would go along with that. And the assessments are just not the benchmarking assessments, but we also wanna look at diagnostics. We also wanna look at the progress monitoring. So if you do have a student who may be struggling in some of these areas, we have a way of monitoring that, diagnosing that, being able to provide that feedback to classroom teachers in Tier 1. And then when need be, we'll continue to develop those areas for Tier 2 and Tier 3 with a amount of additional support. So really, the beautiful thing we wanted to come back and just share with you this evening is what is our current progress in looking at both print concepts and phonological awareness. And so I'll just put a few of the highlights up here for you to look at this evening. And the first is that we started the year with EAB. That's a research cooperative that we're a part of. And we started off the year by looking at a study that they had done as a part of that cooperative, looking at the third grade reading gap. And that was something that we, all of our reading framework coaches and all of our principals participated in, to take their feedback and to take a look at the data that we're seeing, not only here in the district, but nationwide, and how we can best address that reading gap. And a lot of that information drew us to was those foundational skills. Next, you can see the reading framework coaches, and that is a tremendous group of professionals, lots of knowledge at that table, a lot of great ideas, and they do wonderful work at the buildings with the students they serve directly, as well as with the teachers that they support and coach with all of this information. And I have the honor, should've mentioned along with Lizzy, who's my counterpart with this, bringing Lizzy in, brings that EAL perspective in as well, as to how we ensure that we're meeting the needs of not only our English speakers, but our bilingual students as well, as part of this process. We can address that upfront. But I have the honor of meeting with them twice a month. And during that time, we're really doing a lot of review of what is the current status, being able to take in that information, do some planning of what should those next steps be, and then look at how we're gonna assess that progress so that once implementation occurs, that we can make sure that we're continuously looking at our progress. And I could've mentioned before, we're looking at reading framework. That reading framework is from about 2013, 2014, around that time. And so it's part of the life of the refresh. She's just really coming back around and saying, okay, we've implemented this. Can we come back and have a conversation around how's it working and what areas can we improve? We've had a meeting with all of our reading teachers. That's not just the framework coaches. It's all about 31 reading teachers that we have in the district, along with the principals, brought them together again to get their feedback about how things are going with print concepts and phonological awareness. And we brought in a literacy consultant that we're working with to bring that outside perspective in, just to bring some of that knowledge she has working primarily in the world of literacy, so she can support us through that process. So we have her meet with them and us to be able to pull that information together and give them a little bit of review of what we wanna talk about with our K1 teachers. And then on February 28th, this is part of the institute day, for a half-day, we're gonna have all of our kindergarten and first grade teachers participate in workshop with that nursing specialist, who's going to be revealing with them the importance of those foundational skills, specifically making sure we're all on the same page with understanding print concepts and phonological awareness. And then go further into giving some specific strategies for instruction that we can be using as a part of the classroom. So that would be kind of where we're at right now. As a part of, I should mention too, with reading with the framework coaches, we are working through the assessment process and looking at what we have and what additional items we need to bring to the table. One of those we're working on right now is just a checklist that we can simply have available to our teachers for print concepts. Really breaking, and early looking for in the classroom, or with our students. That's one of those types of skills that you can really see in the classrooms you're working with kids during shared model reading, as you get into guided reading and things like that. Doesn't necessarily require an assessment. But having that type of documentation available to them, that they can kind of mentally check through or have it physically check through and see those things, are really important. And this last piece, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of those phases that we'll be looking at. So we're talking about, it's regular, we're working on K1 right now, print concepts and phonological awareness. There's other pieces to that, we'll be getting to those. And just so I can kind of put the phases in here, so you can see our next work will be with phonics and word study, while not letting go, print concepts and phonological awareness. As I said before, we wanna make sure we're consistently reviewing and checking in and monitoring progress by looking at our district data dashboard, by working with the classroom teachers to see what's working. Moving into our phonics work, eventually fluency, and another concentration.
Any questions from board members?
Come on. So how does the work of a reading framework coach differ from that of a reading specialist?
Sure, good question. The reading framework coach is a designation that was given to one reading specialist per building to be a part of kind of this steering committee, this central committee for learning and development of our reading framework, just on what work is needed around reading.
Can I have another question under here? What is a reading framework? Slide, the top bullet point, it mentions not dependent on a particular program. So does that mean, is phonics being approached differently in different buildings? Do we have a district-wide approach to it, or how's that work?
Yeah, so part of what we did is starting with the print concepts and the phonological awareness, is that's got the building blocks to work in the phonics. You're right, right now, different buildings are using different program materials, be they foundations, blevins, some creative materials that they have on their own. So that'll be a process to work through, and then to really understand the phonics. And then you have to consider, we wanna look at a specific program or materials. What the reference here is to that first bullet point is really speaking to what's down below, interactive read aloud, shared reading, guided reading, and then the independent reading. But as far as really looking at those top pieces, we're talking about foundational skills. For some of those areas, the program might be the best approach to look at those. But again, it's about the explicit intentional instruction so that those things are being learned and then being embedded into that guided reading practice. Can I answer the questions?
Can I else? So I have one question, I'm not sure I know how to ask it. But I was thinking, you know, are we able to identify students who maybe didn't come through our early childhood program or all-day kindergarten and have to tailor how we approach these foundational skills for those who might need more help versus the ones who are kindergarten-ready?
Yeah, we do have some assessments available to us right now, primarily letter identification, letter sound correspondence, and high-frequency words. But a part of this process is finding some of those other assessments, specifically phonetic awareness, when you're thinking about blending and segmenting, is being some significant indicators in the phonological area as to the success of moving into phonics. So those would be some things that we do need to develop, which should be relatively easy and be able to put into place so that we have that available for our classroom teachers to have that information. I would say right now, our classroom teachers, the vast majority of them, aren't able to see that as a part of their daily instruction. But having a consistent assessment that we can use as a benchmark, we can make helpful and guiding their instructions, as well as our ability to provide support to them and really see what they need.
Yeah, just thank you for that. It'd be interesting to know if we had any ability of kind of historical data to see a difference of students who went through, maybe there is, kind of the early childhood program.
I think it's a interesting question, if you can see the difference between.
I didn't know how to ask it.
I was just looking for what information might you have for any student coming in, so.
I think that's something that we would be able to get because we now have something called the Kids Assessment that is required by the state of Illinois. And so our, all of our human teachers need to give that assessment within the first 45 days of school. And Julie Ostenbrowski collects that data for all of our human students. And so she would basically be able to do a cross-reference between her students that attend Jefferson and do not attend Jefferson. And she probably could give you a specific answer today, but she was sitting here on those results.
No, I wasn't looking for the answer. I was just wondering if that answer enabled us to deal with students, definitely.
Right.
That test was new this year, right?
It was new last year, I think that came into play. But I think, again, elements of it are actually what Julie has used. So our early learning collaborative monitors some pieces of data around kindergarten readiness, and there are a few of the kind of basic concepts that Julie's been monitoring, especially specific to some of our target areas or targets, yeah.
If I remember that article correctly, we did pretty good in kindergarten readiness. What was our ranking?
I don't remember exactly, but yeah.
I don't remember as well, but we were mentioned as doing very well.
I thought it was tops in the state. It's what I remember in the article, is the article, something coming out. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Hey, I want to just follow up. Is there some, as there, as teachers are going through these, the print concepts and, you know, letters and things, are there pieces with, embedded in that model to help identify, like if a child is dyslexic? Or, you know, other, you know, that's different from just maybe, I guess, taking a little bit more time to learn these things. But is there anything embedded in that process to help identify things like that?
Yes, that's really a big part of our, looking at our assessments that we have. You know, again, the, around that dyslexia component there, the foundational skills being explicitly taught and having a systematic way of doing that across all of our classrooms, instructionally, is a good way to support students who either are identified or might be identified in the future in terms of their instruction. As far as identifying students being earlier, who might be struggling in that respect, that's where adding in some of these additional assessments will support us. Instructionally, the building level and district level, again, can answer those questions and provide support if needed earlier on. Because of more direct instruction, explicit systematic instruction we can provide, whether it's in Tier 1, potentially in the area of Tier 2, will support those kids. So part of it really is, in that support, is offering more assessment. Everybody loves to hear more assessment. But finding the right time and the right way to get those assessments in place so that we can support those learners.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our second oral report is our monthly social-emotional learning feature.
Thanks for the opportunity again to talk about social-emotional learning for the board of education meetings. Typically, I've highlighted some of the regular chapters in our school, but I think Mr. Bar kicked us off, doing a nice job there. So I'm actually gonna talk about some of our work at the district level. I'm actually connected to a resource we're using. You've heard EAB mentioned tonight by a couple of folks that were presenting. I think you're aware that just recently, Dr. Schubler and myself and a few principals presented at the state level on our work with EAB around principal leadership and the collaborators we're utilizing. We're also utilizing EAB as a resource to support our SEL. So I just wanna draw that to your attention. So just as a little bit of background on EAB as a resource and how we utilize them and what they provide for us. They're really a resource bank, so at multiple levels. First of all, all of their work is based upon best practice in the educational literature world, so the research world, but also in the best practice of what cutting-edge districts are doing. So they have an exhaustive research bank of educational literature. They also have an exhaustive bank of districts that are putting the best practices in place and then tools for us to access around those districts or around those practices. They also give us access to on-demand studies to solving some problems that we may be facing. So they're really a solution provider. They can kind of tailor on-demand research for us, right? And they also give us support through people, right? So we can contact them and ask them different questions. So we use them in multiple facets, from professional learning to different study groups, to the work that you just saw Mr. Walsh presenting on. They've been a backbone, because all the work that we really wanna do in education should be backed by, is this moving the dial for our kids? Is this something good for our kids? And all of EAB's research always comes back to, is this improving an outcome? And whatever you're looking for, desired outcome for students. So one of the things that EAB does on all of their large landmark studies is they try to find the best practices that will have the most effective impact, right? So they did this exhaustive research process from the literature to study districts to over 200 to 300 interviews with districts, getting to the point of what's really best practice. And around the managing behavior and social-emotional learning, they've got a roadmap of about 15 practices that they identify. And so I pointed this out for you on this roadmap, you know, around what does the research tell us, really for a few reasons. One, when you look at some of these practices, it affirms the good work that we are, that we're doing in District 200. But it also allows us to say, hey, this is a good practice that we wanna take on or implement. Now, behind each of these 15 practices in the EAB research bank sits a toolkit. That toolkit gives you access to what districts are doing this work really well. That toolkit gives you access to the actual research that sits behind it. So there's always some tools and pieces behind. So why is this important? How does this correlate to our work in social-emotional learning? When you look at the roadmap that EAB has around best practice in the social-emotional learning world, many of those pieces, we are either implementing, researching, or they're in progress. Obviously, the top two you've heard me talk about for the past year and a half around school connectedness, relationship mapping, trusted adult relationship mapping was a resource we took right away from EAB, put it into our relationship training. Many of our schools are using that in combination with surveys and different pieces to get at school connectedness. We've launched really a full-year two-part plan around problem-informed training and perspective. Transition program for incoming high-risk kindergartners. We have a pilot team that's in place right there, looking to pilot that in the summer. Much of our work focuses on TBIS and positive behavior supports. This March will roll out behavior guidelines, direct SEL instruction. We've got a pilot team with a universal screening. And the bottom two, cross-functional team meeting and reintegrating at the high school. These are two proposals that we've been working with our high schools on. Be talking a little bit about it even more tomorrow at our Board SEL team meeting. But if you look just at the roadmap, you'll see some of the things that are affirmed in our work and also see how EAB has given us quick access to really expedite some of our work in SEL. So I'll stop and take any questions.
Any questions from board members? Any questions for board members?
So can you explain EAB again? This is an outside company, a resource we're working with.
Yeah, really, they are. They're a research-based firm. They started in higher education and now are certainly in the P-4 space. And their process really starts with solving districts' biggest problems, right? So they take landmark questions, they utilize educational literature, they research best practice districts, conduct exhaustive interviews, look at what's moving the mark for that student outcome, and put it all together for you. We have access electronically. We also have a guide that we can work with. So we've got to directly contact with a person. And we also have access to their web conferences and conferences.
So they're kind of like a consultant to us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, okay, another acronym that I keep, we always hear about is CASL. So what's the difference between CASL and EAB?
Yeah, so CASL is a collaborative for social-emotional learning, right? And again, group of experts focused on the best practice in social-emotional learning, really, kind of imagine developing those competencies that you would see in the learning part of our framework. So we think about the five components of our framework. A lot of CASL stuff sits in the learning part, but there's other pieces that sit within there. CASL has research, they certainly do. So again, are they a consultant? Are we working with them directly as a consultant? No. And they are specifically focused only on SEL as well, where EAB, we're running five different leadership collaboratives. One focused on closing the college access gap, the mental health, managing behavioral disruptions, third, maybe relearning achievement, principal leadership, so that it's just a broader piece. And it should be told a much more exhaustive research process because they have best practice districts and they offer you toolkits around it, and they often get on-demand research studies. So any of our schools at the school improvement level have an opportunity to say, hey, we're having this problem, or we're studying this through our school improvement process, what do you have on this? Or what can I put in front of my leadership team to start guiding thinking for practice? So it got much more unique advantage there between the CASL and EAB.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next we have two discussion items. First is the Spanish Language Arts presentation.
All right, good evening again. And this time I'm invited Dr. Baker to join me to be providing with an update relative to our Spanish Language Arts Exploratory Committee that we started in October. And so we're here to provide you with an update relative to that. So, sorry. Okay, so I think the first important question for us to answer for you is, why are we talking about Spanish language arts? Well, we're talking about this because ISBE has some new rules and regulations around Spanish language arts and the importance of including that in a bilingual program. And so before, we utilized the students' first language to support with their second language, but now there's this idea that you need to continue to support so that we are continuing to have bilingual students and we're utilizing the Spanish language arts to support the English language arts proficiency. So, Susan, let me get to my brothers in there. So Dr. Baker and I put together some goals around Spanish language arts. And so our first goal there is to continue English language proficiency for our bilingual students. Our second goal is about keeping our students' Spanish language and developing them as Spanish bilingual students. And the third goal being around cultural advocacy and having that awareness and valuing the cultural linguistic assets that they bring to school. So actually, when I started in July, I sat down with Dr. Baker. We knew these new rules and regulations, and we said, okay, so we need to do some thinking around this. And so we talked about, first and foremost, our current Spanish bilingual program, and that's called TVE program. And we talked about that's one model that we could continue with Spanish language arts, but we would be enhancing that program. So we would also be including more Spanish language arts. But we also talked about there were two other models that we could look at for this programming. And those are out in blue circles where we could be looking at dual language or also foreign language in the elementary school. And so we brought together an exploratory committee for that purpose. And that exploratory committee is a rich group of people. So it consists of our bilingual Spanish teachers at our elementary buildings, middle school buildings. It has our elementary instructors from the bilingual sites. It includes community members. It includes bilingual parents. It includes middle school principal and also our director of high school instruction. And so that group is really looking at these three models, and you'll see that our goals are listed here, too. So through that research, we're really looking closely at enrollment and staffing. And we're using them to provide us with input so we can make a final recommendation to you as to the best programming model for our school district. So here you'll see the layout of the dates that we have met. Each of these meetings have been about two hours in length, and we have devoted two meetings at a time to each of these programs. And so we've moved through two programming models thus far. We're here tonight to provide you with an update on those two. So I'm gonna jump right into dual language here. I just want to take a moment and stop because that's kind of a lot. I just wonder if there's any initial questions before we start to jump into programming models.
Why don't you go ahead and go through them?
Okay. All right, so we're gonna start with dual language exploration. So there are actually two ways that you could deliver dual language. One of the ways that that could be delivered is in a one-way immersion program. And so that is when the classroom is all Spanish-speaking students. There are two DuPage school districts that have a one-way immersion program, and that is Downers Grove and Wooddale Side. The other programming model is the two-way immersion program, and that is the model that most DuPage school districts are using. And that is the model that we are talking about as part of our exploration. And so this is a really important point right here. So the makeup of the classroom consists of about half of the class being bilingual students and half the class being native English speakers. So the students are learning both languages, Spanish and English. So when we came together with the committee, we developed a list of research questions. The group developed these. And then we spent meeting time going through each of these questions and discussing them at length. So for my purposes here tonight, I'm really providing you with an update on a couple of the answers to those questions. We'll come back to you at some point with all of it, but we're focused on tonight the enrollment information and also the staffing information. All right, so here you're gonna see our six elementary schools that have Spanish bilingual programming. So this actually does change in the school districts from year to year. So some years Hawthorne is a Spanish bilingual site, some years it's not. Some years Longfellow is a Spanish bilingual site, this year it is not. And to be a bilingual site, you need to have twenty or more students that are Spanish speakers and need EL services. And that is when you're required by law to provide a Spanish bilingual teacher. So for the purposes of exploration for dual language, we really dove into kindergarten. And so we looked at all six of our bilingual sites, and we looked at the total number of kindergartners. We broke this out by the number that are bilingual, the number Spanish bilingual, the number who are non-EL or mostly native English speakers. And then you'll see EL multilingual, so those are our students who speak another language but not Spanish. So you'll see we colored in blue the two buildings that are really viable options for a dual language program. And those would be Johnson and Pleasant Hill. And this is due to the number of kindergartners that they have that are Spanish speaking. So you'll see here at Johnson, we have thirty-two Spanish bilingual kindergartners, and at Pleasant Hill, we have ten. That's, if you remember a few slides ago, there was that idea about the two-way immersion classroom, where you need to have that balance of fifty percent English speakers, fifty percent Spanish speakers, where we really talked about how a schooling, let's take Bauer. We have six Spanish bilingual students in kindergarten. The makeup would be very lopsided. So I think it's really important at this point to talk about other school districts. So I get a lot of questions. Okay, Melissa, how is it that other school districts in our area are ready to a language? Well, let's talk about some of those. So you have school districts, let's take like Glen Ellyn. Glen Ellyn has one Spanish bilingual site. We have our Spitz. Almers, one Spanish bilingual site. We have our Spitz. Naperville two oh three is the only one that's a little bit different, where they have multiple Spanish bilingual sites like we do. And those students also, remember, our students attend their home school to receive their Spanish bilingual programming. In Naperville two oh four, where there is no language, they have that program in four buildings, or it's actually five. They started at four. It's now at five, and it's their home school for four, a magnet school for a bit. So there is some demographic differences when you look at different school districts and the number of bilingual sites they have. All right, so let's dive into the staffing. So here you're gonna see Johnson. If we were to run a dual language program at Johnson, we would be looking at it to be that two-way immersion, but due to the number of bilingual Spanish students at a grade level, we would need to have two classrooms. So the students would have two teachers, an English-speaking teacher and a Spanish-speaking teacher. They would flow throughout the day. You're gonna see here, too, over time, the staffing analysis, where we do actually have enough Spanish bilingual teachers currently at Johnson School to fill a classroom at each grade level. The staffing change would really come into play there in the fourth and fifth year, where a current specialist who either pulls students out or pushes them to the classroom would have to switch roles with the classroom teacher who is male-certified. Here you'll see the staffing analysis for Pleasant Hill. At Pleasant Hill, we don't have the same number of bilingual Spanish teachers currently. So we do have a teacher that's in kindergarten who's in the classroom who's Spanish bilingual. We have two other Spanish bilingual staff members, but they are currently not classroom teachers. They're specialists that go into multiple classrooms or wholesome groups. So they would need to live a lot places with a current classroom teacher. And then you would see in years four, five, and six, you would actually need to hire or move teachers across the district that are Spanish bilingual to take, to have a classroom. Some other district-wide considerations that the committee discussed. So if we just had two buildings that were running a dual language program, this is what makes District Two Hundred different than a lot of other school districts, because we would still have our four other elementary sites, maybe five, that are Spanish bilingual that need to run other programming models. So we would have those buildings we needed either still do the ACB or they need to do FLESS. And you have to remember, too, our other schools in our district all have EL programming. So we also would have EL programming model going, too. So that would be a difference between our school districts and a lot of others, that there would be multiple kinds of EL programming for the district. Another point that our bilingual teachers expressed was that they had concerns over teaching multiple content areas in Spanish. Many of our current bilingual teachers Spanish their second language. And so the academic vocabulary in all content areas would be a learning curve for them. And last consideration would be the additional cost of curriculum for professional development and training. So generally, I, you know, dual language programming, when you're going through professional development for that, that is probably like a five-to-ten-day training program, probably multiple years, to support to get that up and off the ground. All right, I'm the chairwoman, Dr. Baker, and she's gonna talk to you about FLESS.
Can we ask questions at this point about FLESS one, just so we don't mix up?
Sure.
So maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding, but so if I was to just use Pleasant Hill for an example, if we are looking at, say, ten kindergarten students, am I wrong in thinking we're gonna, we would only be then opening up ten to twelve possibly spots for non-English-speaking students? So if we were looking at, would those only then be limited to Pleasant Hill? So if you did live in the Pleasant Hill community, your child would not be able to... I'm just trying to think of like Northside, Southside. We're only talking a handful of students that would...
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. So that's a great question. Let's talk through that. So taking Pleasant Hill for example, you're correct in exactly what you have said. So generally, school districts that have dual language programming, the priorities are first and foremost the bilingual students, because that's our programming. Second would be the students that are native English speakers at that home school. And then if there are other opportunities and spaces, there's consideration for people in other schools. But due to the numbers that we currently have, it would look like it would be very slim possibility of offering it.
And Pleasant Hill over the last five years, just to give an idea, like, would that, oops, sorry?
Would that fluctuate? And really, it's pretty stable between twelve and thirteen Spanish speakers as kindergarten enrollees. So if you're thinking, like, well, maybe the next year would be two sections, or, no, Pleasant Hill's stayed pretty stable for about six years.
So it's an extremely small number of students that would have the opportunity to participate, that's what I mean.
That is something that the committee talked about, is how, the way you need to organize dual language programming, and it really only being a viable option with the number of students at Johnson and Pleasant Hill was definitely a consideration in that discussion. Thank you. You guys ready yet?
The current program that's required legally, right?
Right.
If, so if there's only ten or whatever, thirty Spanish bilinguals, we still may be running these current programs in Johnson and Pleasant Hill, too?
Um.
Right? Because every kid that's in the current program isn't necessarily gonna be in the dual language program.
That's correct. So, and we can tag team this. So if you would be phasing that in, right, you would be starting at grade level at times. You'd be living in this world of our students who would be in upgrades, seeing our programming model that we currently have in place, and phasing in at grade level at times, starting at kindergarten.
But I guess are all of these, you know, these categories that we have listed in these boxes, they all get EL support?
Oh, the other four buildings, that's what you're asking, the other ones?
Well, they get, let's just say, at Johnson, there's about ninety on here, right? Between EL, non-EL, and EL. How many get EL support today?
Correct. So on that slide where it says the EL multilingual, they also need EL programming, so.
To date the middle group, the non-
To date the middle group, the, the non-EL students are not receiving any support. Those are English-speaking students whose native language is English.
So then the intent would be that all the other ones would be part of this program?
Correct, correct.
The Spanish bilingual.
Yeah. The thirty-two, let's take Johnson. So the thirty-two EL Spanish bilingual students need to receive Spanish language arts. The fifty-five non-EL are, mostly are English-speaking children that are not regularly educated. And our three EL multilingual students need to receive EL services, but not Spanish language arts. That's actually, I'm actually glad you brought that point up, because that actually makes District Two Hundred unique as well, is the number of languages that we have in our school district. I believe it's sixty-seven languages. And some of the other school districts that offer dual-language programming are predominantly of Spanish-speaking, where we have so many languages in EL programming too.
And I think when you take a look at Pleasant Hill, that complexity is, is pretty glaring, just because at Pleasant Hill, they do have almost equal numbers between Spanish bilingual and EL multilingual. So that would mean that in kindergarten, there would be Spanish EL programming running through dual, but also you have someone else supporting the EL multilingual within that same grade level, for a significant number of students.
And the other question I had is on the staffing changes. Would those be incremental, or would that be like reallocated, somebody's retiring?
Right, so it could, I, that would be the ideal situation, that through retirement, that that would be reallocation, that'd be ideal. But you also have to remember that we would be looking at it as a year-by-year basis.
So just to clarify, on these other four schools, Washington, Sandberg, Arthur, and Bauer, we don't have enough Spanish-speaking kindergarten students to be able to get to that about fifty-fifty ratio. So in order for us to, in order for us to do that, we would theoretically have to figure out how to move kids from their home school into those schools to be able to create the dual-language program. And that's where the complexity is.
Or have their lopsided classrooms, that's not the intended model.
And that's why Johnson and Pleasant Hill could work theoretically in terms of just purely their numbers.
That's exactly correct. But Johnson, I want to just again point out, the difference with Johnson is the two-teacher scenario versus the Pleasant Hill situation, where children could have a bilingual teacher all day that speaks English and Spanish.
And at Johnson, would it be one section or two sections?
Two sections, so two groups of students with five teachers.
Got it.
Going back to your point about, like at Pleasant Hill, that you said that there would be another, you had dual-language programs, then there'd be another person there to help the eleven multi, you know, EL multilingual. So right now, is that the same person? Is the Spanish multilingual the same person?
Right now, the way we have that structured is that in the grade levels that we have Spanish bilingual learners that need programming, we align Spanish bilingual specialists to that task. And so we try to pair this year, co-teachers that were in the grade levels with a higher number of Spanish speakers. For example, the person currently working in kindergarten is Spanish bilingual. So then they can provide whole, those services are good through a co-teaching model, so they can do that TTE support through small group instruction. Whereas if you went to dual-language, which is a little bit differently. And, and then that, the way that that program works, you have to have an additional person to be able to support that multilingual. Right now, they have enough support specialists as far as the FTE allocated to make that happen, and which means that though we were currently working it, we wouldn't be able to do that anymore.
And just, when we hear that other districts are doing this, the dual-language program, it's really not district-wide, it's like a, a site.
Correct.
They sit on their own numbers.
That is absolutely correct. I think that's like the benefit of going through the exploratory committee, is we were really able to spend time looking at our specific situation and other school districts. And so I actually have the information up here, there's seven school districts in DuPage County that have a dual-language program. Six of it have one building. Because that is the bilingual, for, that's where bilingual Spanish students, their home school mostly is.
And Naperville two oh three is the...
It's different, it is different.
Okay, any other questions on this one? Dual-language?
Right.
Okay, FLESS, another acronym.
The second primary model that we took a look at was FLESS, which is foreign language in the elementary school. And there's actually two ways to look at foreign language in the elementary school, which can be through the FLESS model and the FLESS model. As Chris had, Dr. Slavik had mentioned, the EAP earlier tonight, the EAP also actually helped us shake a lot of this out, specifically those differences between successful and robust foreign language in the elementary school programs, and maybe more exploratory and kind of a fun way to get excited about language. And that's really the primary difference. FLESS is sort of like, yeah, let's test out what looking at new language feels like, and it's more for fun and, and kind of whetting that appetite for foreign language as students move out through grade levels. And FLESS is much more purposeful with targeted times and also bringing in all of those pieces of speaking, reading, and listening, so the students eventually become by the right. And as we talk about those ISPE guidance, FLESS is really the only model that would help us meet those ISPE requirements, and would require an additional TTE support for students, but we already have that in place. What we know with our committee, these are some of the questions that they came up with. I think what was interesting is as we shook out, what are the benefits of FLESS program, what are the benefits of dual? It was really that a lot of the benefits you see at dual, the districts that are doing with Fidelbi are also seeing those in FLESS. So that was really interesting to take a look at. And then you can see the rest of the questions listed there. So as you looked at those FLESS program considerations in front of you, to be able to apply it to ISPE requirements, we needed to think about, what are the world language readiness standards that actually were adopted this past summer by ISPE? ACTHOL was the standard base that we went with, as well as the new language development standards, which are the English language development standards for students, and then Spanish language development standards. Those are also housing, so it's kind of like two sets of standards working together to help us meet the needs of the TTE learners, but also if you did the FLESS model, any English, native English speakers would also be benefiting from that standard alignment. And when you look at FLESS program, what you're hoping is that through a FLESS model by fifth grade, students would end up at about that novice mid-level, where they can have some conversation, and they are beginning to write and read in that target language, and our target language would be Spanish. It takes about ninety minutes a week to be able to make that happen. Three to five days per week is pretty standard. When we started thinking about the FLESS program considerations for our district, we had to think about, well, who would participate? Within that exploratory committee, we could have come to that grades one through five would be ideal participation, based on the kindergarten half-day, full-day model. As well as, we needed to serve our Spanish bilingual students plus their classmates mates, that would be a priority. The Spanish bilingual students would be in what we call clustered classrooms. People say, what does that mean? So clustered classrooms means that the Spanish bilingual students would be grouped, scooped in, grouped together in one classroom per grade level. Sorry about that. And Johnson would need to have two of those. In that scenario, approximately fifty percent of that classroom would be native English speakers or non-EL peers, much like dual-language. The other option is that you wouldn't cluster, and you serve across all sections in, in a grade level. Our bilingual buildings would need to be a priority for this model, which would include the five that you see listed sometimes, Spits. And then we would be allocating that time allotment through social studies and science, at least that's where we started to explore the most. Ninety to a hundred minutes a week scheduled with your assignment. And then we would want to make sure that we were using social studies and science standards, as well as those standards we just talked about, the ACTHOL standards, as well as planning some of those social, emotional learning standards. That's especially important when they're little, because we want to make sure they have social language across all languages. So then you might say, well, I kind of understand what FLESS is now, right? It's, it's a very purposeful intentional program in the elementary school. And you would need to make that content-based for a couple of reasons. One of that being is that in order for it to be ISPE compliant for EL programs, it needs to be across content areas. But also because what we know from our EAP research, as well as talking to Oakheart, which implements FLESS locally, and looking at the research from Arlington Public Schools, it's been kind of a model for FLESS, is that running that language development through content actually, it makes that more meaningful for the child's learning experience, and allows them to negotiate meaning in a different way. So when you think about what kind of opportunities we need to exist within that program to make that successful, we want to make sure we were having that Spanish language development across all four areas, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. We also then need to deploy those content standards, which in this case would be like your C-three science standards, and your soc, or C-three social studies standards, and your NGSSS science standards. Then we want to think about, if kids have opportunities to negotiate, which would come in through that inquiry process, and actually utilize the language versus just kind of take the other language. Then we have to think about bridging, right? Because we want our students to be competent in both languages, so you spend most of your time teaching that content area in Spanish, and then you would bridge it in English, which means you would cycle back and have kids apply what they learn using English. One thing important to mention too, is that when they look at the research, and instead of applying, they did some research on this, students in content-based programs generally attain a higher level of proficiency when that's actually looked at through the numbers. So then when we take a look at that five-year projection of staff analysis for bilingual sites, the first column shows the current number of bilingual teachers at each of those sites. The second column shows, well, what would we have to add if we cluster our students into clusters based on the number of TTE participants? That last column shows what would we need if we did it across all sections within those identified buildings. Okay, so you can kind of look through the numbers there. I think what's important to note is that really, if we did it in TTE clustered classrooms, even across all of our buildings, we're looking at one point two five teachers to run that programming, whereas if we run it across...
Additional.
Additional to what we already have. And then if you look at that last column of the number of bilingual teachers needed for students to, for all students to participate in FLESS, you're looking at a five, five-and-a-half, a little over five-and-a-half. And, and, and that was based solely on number counts, and like, kind of, there goes basic, you know, you really start asking questions about, well, what about how are TTE students going to get all of the support, and what if numbers change? But basically, based on the numbers we have right now, teachers and students over the, on average, this is kind of what would come up.
So let me just, so that would mean that all students, let me just make sure you're understanding this, all students at these six schools would be getting some instruction in Spanish, and all that's going to be is an additional five-and-a-half FTE roughly?
That's accurate, that's pretty accurate, that's very accurate, Chris. So what we're thinking about is that first we consider that if we're talking first through fifth grade, right? So kindergarten excluded, those kindergarten TTE students would still continue to serve through like a small group model. Co-ties what's happening in both of those buildings right now in kindergarten, as well as some pull-out. And then first through fifth grade though, yes, we would look at all of the students at those bilingual sites would be able to participate in foreign language in the elementary school, with the addition of five point six teachers.
That's a lot of students for only adding five point, I mean, to be at exposure.
Yeah. So I think we're benefiting from the number, the current number of bilingual teachers that we already have at those sites that we would be capturing for the programming and adding on. You have to remember too, like, it's not, it's not for the full day, right? That's the difference. So we figured this out with thirty minutes, thirty times a week. That is how we did it. Again, I want to stress, like, we did math, but it's approximate, right?
So if there was a parent interested in this, lived in the bowers of the other seven schools, they wouldn't be able to take advantage of this? Or unless they did a transfer into one of the six schools?
Well, I was wondering if we would see an increase in permitted transfers, because, well, I want my kid in this, but I'm a Whittier, and I want my kid in Spanish, so I'm just curious, you know, if you would, that there potentially be an increase in that to get into that program.
And then that would trigger a whole conversation around capacity in six schools.
Well, and then there's like probably an application process and all that kind of stuff too, because you only have so many spaces to do. And then I, a question I had, so when, when you're doing content-based instruction like that, what happens when you have a kid starting in second grade or whatever, it's like, language is just not their thing, and they are not getting it because they don't understand the Spanish. There's, there's, not everybody's brain is, you know, some people are good at English, some people are good at math, some people are, are not good at those things, and so what, what happens then?
I think, I think you're going to see productive struggle for sure from students who, like, say we did it in all sections in that building, you would see a significant learning curve and productive struggle. I think less, in less than you would see in the dual program, where you're actually more locked in. And I think we would have to be considerate of how are we bridging for those students at different levels? Keep in mind that as students even start at the program, for example, in their first grade, there's going to be a pretty expansive differentiation band, because you're going to have students in there that have social language in Spanish already, but probably, most likely, not a lot of academic language in Spanish. And then you're going to have English speakers that maybe have never been exposed to Spanish, and you're probably going to have some English speakers who have had exposure to Spanish, but it's just not their native language. So I think we have to be very careful about what kind of support we're able to provide to that classroom during the time. For example, right now, we have a co-ta model at Pleasant Hill, and we need to look at making sure that that co-ta support was during that specific time, and science time, so that we can bridge it effectively. I mean, one thing, and this is going to sound a little bit interestingly, but right now, our, I think it's almost, it's a, it's a benefit to also experience that kind of productive struggle. For example, right now, when, when our English learners arrive in, in third grade, and, and everything's in English, that feels really hard, but we see a lot of our students overcoming that, and we're doing successful things. So I think we just, if kids can do it, we should have to support them the right way.
Sorry.
So while we're doing that, I'm just kind of looking ahead at the end summary.
Yes.
From what I'm seeing here, it seems like the only... From what I'm seeing here, it seems like the only opportunity, if we did the dual language, the only opportunity for parents who don't live at Johnson or Pleasant Hill would be probably a few students that would be able to be added at the Johnson School. So would that be a commitment? If we were able to do that, would that be a commitment? We would be asking of those parents that those kids go to Johnson K through six, or K through five?
Correct.
Okay. And then we would have to get into a whole process about how do we select or approve or allow those things to
Transportation.
Transportation. Well, would you have to transportation the kids or would they, would it be on their own?
We'd have to decide that. Brad, I guess I will say on this level, so we're not that far down in the weeds on any of these opportunities, right? We're still really kind of conceptual level, understand the programs and the options. And then, you know, as I'm confident as we move forward, if there's one we focus more intensely on, some of those questions will have to be answered.
And would this be for a twenty-one, twenty-two year? Like are we looking a year? I mean, this would not be something for five.
Yes.
So I wanted to just kind of summarize that because there's a lot of information there. So there's several points that I included on this slide that we thought were the very most important from our exploration so far. So is it required Spanish language arts programming for bilingual students? An exploratory committee is switching three different models. Dual language is a model that really is only feasible with the number of students at Johnson and Pleasant Hill. Due to the number of Spanish bilingual students at each grade level at Johnson, there would be few slots for additional students from other buildings to participate in a dual language program. And students at Johnson would have the two teachers. Dual language at Pleasant Hill would require many staffing changes to increase the number of bilingual classroom Spanish teachers. And also FLESS programming could be organized in that clustered model or all students at a bilingual site for additional cost. And then we do have some next steps. So our group has another meeting date on the books, it's March fourth. That's actually gonna be our longest meeting. We're meeting for more than two hours. And we are looking at intense TVE. And we're also taking time to analyze all three programming models and the benefits and challenges. We are beginning in-depth discussions with Johnson. We're starting that with Johnson because we have the highest number of bilingual students at that site. And Mr. Edwards is a part of our committee and his teachers. And so it makes sense that we would start with more in-depth discussions there. And even talking about that exploratory committee is gonna move past the district group and move into a Johnson conversation with their own community as well and staff. And we, Dr. Meeker has been keeping the bilingual parent advisory committee informed around this whole process and seeking their input beyond the members that are a part of our exploratory committee. We have secured the services of a local Spanish bilingual consultant to support us in whichever programming model we do end up recommending. That that person would be able to guide us with professional development. And Dr. Meeker has actually spent time with our Spanish bilingual students that are in public middle school. And we've been capturing their voice on their learning experiences going through our school district, through Spanish bilingual programming. So we're going to be bringing that information back to our exploratory committee too as a consideration for recommendations as well.
Is Spanish the only language that programming is required for?
Two answers to that question. Is Spanish bilingual programming is the only language where required by bilingual program? In addition to two hundred, some other school districts have to have other bilingual programming.
But based on the numbers?
Exactly. But Spanish language, that's what the state of Illinois is required.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
Very complicated.
I told Lindsay that she's getting her second doctorate. In a way, it's been really, um. She's very nice to see. And I think what's been really valuable too is I've been spoiling this a lot in my head and in our department. But as we've been able to do the exploratory committee, just having that outside lens of not a bilingual teacher has helped us really, I think, shake out some of the pieces that we didn't have.
And I'll say too, just a big thank you to the folks that are a part of that group or giving up their time. We have greatly appreciated the lens that they all bring to the table. And it's been such a fantastic conversation.
The only thing that I would, as we move through this process, you know, we have a group of parents we've heard from that have expressed concerns. I just want to make sure that we're still in contact with them or in contact with them at the right time as we move through this and helping them understand our opportunities, the complexity, you know, things we would have to consider.
Absolutely. Anytime we have had someone with a job to us, we provided them to sit in and walk them through what we've discovered.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Okay, next is an item that kind of was a carryover that was put on our agenda for the last meeting, which is the discussion of the board parking lot.
So I think as Brad mentioned at our January Committee of the Whole meeting, as we went through the five-year financial projections, that conversation morphed into some conversation around the board parking lot. And so I think a couple of things that we wanted at least try to do tonight to bring a little bit of clarity around the connection between those two. One, I think just kind of remind the board of where that parking lot came from as a concept, how the board started to maintain one and it actually referenced in your principles of operation. And then, and then just give you an update and make sure we have a little bit of clarity around some of the items that are on the parking lot, those that are actually currently part of a district plan of study already and those that are not. And then obviously, as we move through, this brings both into budget development and into the development of any of our study goals or action plans. We need to get a little bit of feedback on if there are any items specifically that the board isn't asking us to incorporate in either the budget for next year or our study plans, right, for next year. So I think in their principles of operation, the parking lot was recognized as an opportunity for board members to express interest in topics they may like to have considered on future goals or work plans. And so in the development of that parking lot, well, really, there's an intentional focus or review of the parking lot around that point in the year where you're setting specific goals and work plans for that upcoming year. An item can be introduced at any time. So either through a conversation that the board is already having or at the end of the meeting when there is that standing agenda item under other board reports or future agenda items. That's where there's opportunity if a board member has a particular item that perhaps came from a learning experience, a conference, a session you went to and/or perhaps a conversation with community members or groups of community members that have advanced a topic or idea. And that's really the venue that at any point a board member, if they want to introduce something, just has that opportunity to say, here, here's a topic I'm interested in. This is what I would hope to accomplish, perhaps out of considering this. And, you know, if the board gives it the affirmative, it will be then fleshed out for consideration on the parking lot. That doesn't mean it's necessarily part of a work plan until again, we hit that point in the year where we're setting specific goals and you decide to perhaps pull it kind of out of that consideration range and put it. So that's the origin, really. I think the parking lot's been around pre-grad at my time, certainly in two hundred. But I think it was developed with that concept in mind that I think recognize that, you know, as we move into the year, we oftentimes have a strategic set of initiatives that are really developed for a year, but there's just that ongoing opportunity, I think, for them.
And so, yeah, this is something that we haven't used before. I mean, we kind of had it, but quite honestly, some of us didn't remember. We had it and it was, it was kind of when we did our IASPE kind of board governance review that we reviewed the board operating principles, what I remembered of this tool. And so it was kind of my decision to kind of collect all this feedback we've heard from board meetings from the community, students willing to have the chance to chat, other things, issues that board members may or may not be, or may be interested in, things that came up at the CAC. So it was my thought to kind of collect that information and put it in the green folders the last couple of years. We talked a little about it a little bit the last time as it related to the budget. I just figured it'd be good to get it on the agenda because if there's something we're seriously interested in asking the administration to look at, I'd rather do it at the beginning of the budgeting process rather than the end of the budgeting process. It didn't make sense. And, you know, if there's serious things we want to look at, we need to understand the implications of that. You know, what would have to come off of the goal work plans that have been kind of mapped out for the next four years? That we would have to make a decision. So what I wanted to do is just kind of raise this issue to help our administration plan accordingly and not do it kind of reactively at the end of, or at the beginning of the next school year. So that's kind of what I was trying to accomplish and give, you know, kind of give any direction to the board or acknowledge that maybe some of these are more committee-level discussions. So I think maybe the best way to go through this is one by one and talk about, or talk about.
Yeah, well, so here's the board and really two pieces of information you have in your green folders. One, the document that's on a Board of Education parking lot working document. Those are all of the items that are currently on your parking lot. We added four columns at the backend. So that first, one, two, three, four, five columns are already a part of that parking lot item. What we added in were the last four columns, just a rough sense of cost impact for that item, a sense of like time for implementation. So if we were to consider it, is it, is it kind of a short-term ramp up or a longer-term ramp up? And then just two questions at the end that will provide an opportunity as we move through the spring to indicate whether it should be considered as a budget priority or a work plan. And so if I can, I'm gonna go down and actually take them a little bit out of order, but I think it might just, might make a little more sense as we work through them. So there are six items on your parking lot that are actually already connected in some form or function to work plans that we have in play this year. Obviously, you just heard a presentation on foreign language, dual language. So clearly, that's, that's kind of already in the study fold. So I'm not going to spend any more time on it tonight because I think you have a pretty good sense of where that study sits. At your February Committee of the Whole, one of the items that Rod brings every year is an update for the board on our master technology plan. One of the items you will hear incorporated in that discussion this year is some discussion around perhaps expanding from a universal access policy to a one-to-one policy at certain grade levels. So again, just know, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it tonight because we're gonna get to it, right, at a future meeting, but really already in the discussion fold. The fifth item down on balancing facility capital improvements with some space modernization. That's not in a specific work plan this year, but the facility committee did ask that be a topic of conversation within the facility committee, and it is coming up. And so again, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that. I just want to let you know one of your committees is considering that one. And so that at some point kind of make its way back out to full board. So that's really in the hopper. The item on restoring activity buses at the high schools, actually the SEL committee is going to hear some data and information around that. A component of our social emotional learning plan around student connectedness has to do with some strategic data gathering that we've done around what is our percentage of students that are in an activity and for those that are not, why, right? So, so again, that will come into fold, I think, in some conversation. So we need to spend a ton of time on that now because that will come out to the full board. And an item specifically on exploring an after-hours bus at the elementary level, you actually heard an update. So again, where we have a program, you heard an update on the math opportunity. That's an after-school program and we do provide transportation. We don't have it as just a general opportunity because candidly, there's not a lot of after-school programming within the elementary level. But when we do have that opportunity, like the math intervention, we provide transportation that's associated with it. So while it's technically not in a work plan, I guess I just, that is a part of that conversation. So, you know, if there are different thoughts around expansion there, we can certainly talk about that at some point. And then the last one, if you flip to the backside, the security camera piece. So again, just as we move forward, one of the things that Rod and JR have continued to do is explore more cost-effective opportunities for incorporating camera systems aboard expanded Lash year to your middle schools, right, that you've developed. So again, it's not a specific study plan, but that's something that really we've looked at for making sure we have the right opportunities. So I'm just, just to kind of share with you, it's kind of in the fold on some discussion pieces. And so really, the only items that are on your dashboard that are really not kind of part of a current discussion right now are high school start times, universal full-day kindergarten, evaluating the PE exemption policy, and then two on the back on exploring the required class around some basic life skills and then evaluation of the class size, targeting camps. Although that was really part of the conversation within the enrollment committee that at least we brought some of that data back to the board. So you had a feel around that.
So really, there's four left.
There's four things that are not really currently part of a specific conversation. Couple of them potentially, right? Again, we have to flesh it out. A couple of them are pretty significant price tags. And so I think that's, that's been part of the conversation and certainly around the start time piece, that's a big, that's a big ramp up, right?
Let's start with the two apparently easier ones first. Susan, you brought this, evaluate the PE exemption policy. I think that was at the high school, right?
I'm assuming.
I think it was high school.
Yeah, it was high school. It always depends on the feedback that we receive from the students. And, you know, I mean, I know there's a lot of information, you know, how many kids are in multiple sports in, you know, throughout the year and what the time commitment is there and how that would impact their academics if they could have a study hall during that time instead of.
And they, so right now we have a PE exemption.
Okay.
A student can exempt out of, if they are in an athletic, they can exempt out of PE, but only to go into a study hall.
Okay.
We don't allow them to exempt out to go into an additional course, the way that the procedure. So we, you do actually have a policy that allows for
Yeah.
certain exemptions. One is athletics, marching band, and then there's a few other miscellaneous pieces, but only to exempt into a study hall.
It's not consistent though. It's not consistent. You have to be a junior or senior and you have to be a varsity player. Because when my daughter was a sophomore as a varsity player, she was not allowed to do that. So I'm just saying there's, there's some oddities to that policy. So if you're a freshman, which I look at as if you're a freshman, it's even harder for you. That's always where I think you need that opportunity too. So that, I don't understand, is that school code?
Was.
Okay.
It was just recently actually given more flexibility that allows it to come down. So originally in the school code, probably back to Charlie's principal days, that was actually in the school code that it was only for junior, senior varsity athletes. There's been some more flexibility that's. There's been some more flexibility that's, that's been given around that. And again, so, you know, that, that's one that certainly perhaps at a committee level at some point, we can spend a little bit more time kind of flushing out some of the nuances around that because again, there are some stipulations. The reason we don't allow kids to exempt out and take a class is that school code is really clear that if at any point they stop the activity, they have to go right back into PE.
Now, my question is.
When you allow, again, it's hard to allow them to take another class because then you do potentially have this situation where, you know, I'll give you a personal example. If my son, high school athlete, tours ACL in the middle of the soccer season this year, he's out of the activity. If he were PE exempt, he would have to, in whatever form or function they offered, drop that class and go right back into PE because that's the way that the code is written specifically around that. That's why we only allow them to drop for a study hall because that's easier to flip back out of the study hall, right into a PE class if you needed to. But we can, again, that's one that if certainly Teaching and Learning Committee wanted to just understand that one a little bit better, we can, we can move that over to the, to the committee level.
Do many kids utilize that?
Not a ton. We really have very few that take it. We, Ian has actually been reviewing and employing the data and it's very, very small numbers.
Are they aware that they can do that? Well, you also have to have, make sure your coach and your PE teacher are also supportive of that. I'm just going to put that out there that that's sometimes not always the case.
Yeah. I, I just, and again, I mean, I don't have high school students, so I don't know, but I just, I'm just basing on that feedback. I got that when we had the chat, that I just got the impression that they weren't even, I got the impression he wasn't aware that he could do, that they didn't even know that that existed. So, because that was my impression too, that, but again, I'm just not in that world, so that's not something I would know.
So Teaching and Learning Committee, maybe look at this the next meeting. Just flipping the backside, that part one is later. Chris, the basic life skills.
Yeah, you know, I know we've, we've talked about the possibility of, you know, maybe that technology requirements, you know, kids have such an opportunity for technology, you know, maybe there are some opportunities for more life skills to be brought into a graduation requirement. I've just read some articles about how, you know, students can go through college, yet they, they don't know how to even make themselves dinner. You know, they, you know, there's just a lot of basics that there, you know, have been, you know, they're, they're not able to necessarily function in the real world. I know we have a great class. One of my, one of my children took Adult Living and got a little bit of everything in there, some budgeting, some, some basic cooking. It was just a variety of things that really, and I can tell you, she's the one that will cook dinner for our family and the other one doesn't know what to put the microwave on. You know, so it's, you know, it's, I just think that we've, we've pushed, we've pushed, we've pushed all these, these academics and our kids are not able to then sometimes cope with around their own. And I know there's been a lot of, a lot of talk about bringing back some of those life skills. So I was looking at it as if we were to say that one of our technology credits or something, I know we have had conversations about that, at least at the teaching and learning level in the past couple of years, you know, if something were to come off, is this a possibility for something? And it doesn't have to be just one course. It could be options of life skill opportunities for kids. I'm not saying we need to do it now, just something to think about.
So leave it on the park.
On the park, comfortable there.
Flipping over to the front page again, full-day kindergarten is something that Jim Matheson raised. I'm not sure how much we've talked about that recently. Trying to speak for Jim, which is difficult. So would it be maybe just kind of, we've had updates on it.
We did, actually, just last year, I think Mr. Matheson asked Chris with an update that he gave to the board. And I think kind of following that update, and I don't think he wanted to pull it off of the parking lot, but did not advocate after that update to really do any more with it right now.
Okay.
It does feel like after the, before we got on this, the dual language, we were talking about being, considering big changes at the K5 level, throwing in full-day kindergarten would mean a whole lot of changes at that, at the elementary school level.
Right. And one reality of full-day kindergarten is if you wanted to expand it, do we have the space?
Yeah.
And that creates a lot of complexity, a lot of costs if we were to do that. We offer it and we have, you know, there's other school districts that don't offer it at all. We just have this tuition-based option with caps, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I would just leave it on there. And then finally, I'm going to let Chris lead the discussion since your name's on this.
Yeah, my name's on it from a few years ago. Yes, you know, we had a lot of talk about this through, through the community, through students over the years, and we did put it on the parking lot, also knowing though that it is an extremely complex. And I look at, and I commend Melissa in your department for what you have done with the dual language and how comprehensive that is. I can only imagine that the comprehensive study, thank you, my, I'm not hearing you. I can only imagine what it would need to look like for this. And, you know, I, I still think it's something important, but when I look at a two and a half million dollar price tag, if we were to replace a tier, one of the conversation, the things I mentioned before was, are there other things out there that can impact student learning in a bigger way than, than need this? And how would this look like then? I have some concerns now as we are looking into service learning and internships and things like that. Is it going to, if I shifting that, what would that need for some of our other goals that are out there? It's a lot bigger. It was easy to say, let's put it on the parking lot and talk about, but as I, over these last couple of years, realized it's a much bigger topic. And so I guess the question would be, you know, it says this would need significant lead time. I'd really want to know what would it take away if you were to say?
Right. This is one of these that if we said, hey, let's study this next year, then something else on the plan would have to fall off. And so what would that impact be?
And if it's something as significant as, you know, needing to bring in community members and students and staff and, you know, looking at what does that mean for our sports teams? What does that mean for our students with jobs? What does that mean for all of those pieces? That's like way bigger than the dual language study is, is. And so, you know, it's not something we, I think we can say very lightly, jump into this, but I don't know that we're ready to say, rid of it.
So it seems to me like leave it on the parking lot, but we're going to continue to hear it from parents and students. I mean, that's just the reality.
I think the bigger question too is, is I know that as we were putting together the agenda, we, we talked a little, little bit about this is, you know, what is that timeline and what is the procedure for this whole parking lot? Like that's optimal for the district to, you know, for us to say, we want you to look at this. Is January the time to be looking at for fall or is it fall to be looking at for the following fall? Like what, is it goal plan time? Is our goal plans still four years or shorter? I mean, you know, like we need to, I think, put some of those things in place to make this parking lot be.
Sure. Yeah, and that would be, I mean, it's reference of our Board Operating Principles. Some of that's that we wanted to adjust, you know, how we use this tool in our goal-setting and our budgeting process. That's for us to decide at a later date. But right now, you know, it doesn't really have a timeframe on it. I don't recall, maybe it does.
I think it says in your Board Operating Principles that for consideration, when you are setting those goals for the year, so I mean, I would interpret that to mean it will always be looked at at least at like July, August timeframe when you're establishing priorities for the year. But, you know, Chris, to your point, I think one of the things that maybe, you know, we need to layer into that discussion, you know, consciously moving into this year is, so that, that could be like in the immediate, we want to attack that problem, or it could mean in the next 12 months, we want to layer it in, which then kind of gives us a year, right, lead time to move, kind of move into that. So, you know, again, I think that would be worthy of some, some conversation to just kind of flesh out how you want to kind of deal with this document, whether you want it to just be that annual review point, or if you want to put a mid-year at least discussion point around it, around this same timeframe where we are. I mean, obviously that, you know, certainly the, those are all things that the board could look at.
Well, I'm hearing about, we want to look at this, which would cause a revaluation of the goals and priorities for next year. So I would say we, a lot of this work is being done at committee or in future, future presentations. Let's revisit this back in, you know, July, August and see where we are with it. And then we can determine at that point in time whether we want to bring it back up in this time next year.
And then just for, I think for board consideration, we don't need to go through all of these, but I, but I asked our team, we spent some time as well, not, not really drafting our own parking lot, but just trying to really identify based on some of the other work elements that are in progress, what are some of the other kind of strategic budget considerations when we move into the next year? And again, I don't think any of these topics should significantly surprise you. Some of them you've spent more time with already as a board. A couple of them you're going to hear more, you know, from, from coming up, but obviously you've heard about middle school math. That's been an area of study. K5 instructional materials, that says K5 math instructional materials. That is kind of an R and D piece. You haven't heard a ton about that yet, but it's one of the things that we've kind of had on our work plan. You heard about career pathways. I don't specifically think there's a significant budgetary impact of that next year, but I think there will be as we move into some of the outer pieces. You heard about the K5 foundational skills earlier in this meeting. Coordinated reentry is something that Chris mentioned a little earlier tonight. SEL is going to learn more about as we look at some kind of targeted emotional health supports for kids, especially at the secondary level. It's a concept that we've been fleshing out. Kinders is something that Chris will bring as kind of a pilot opportunity we've been exploring. And again, it's really focused on looking at some of our targeted needs in kids that need transitional help into kindergarten based on not having had early learning or preschool opportunities. So we've been, been piloting some thoughts around that. The whole area of behavioral support, behavioral wellness and support is something that we've heard internally loud and clear and even, even heard, you know, some conversations. So we've been looking at potentially some targeted supports in that area. And then there's a few things on the back. You're going to hear a lot about technology and security. When Rod does his master tech plan, we've been attacking that area, but increasingly there have been more and more technology attacks on school districts and we want to make sure we stay in front of the curve on that. Disproportionality is a group that Charlie has been meeting with. And again, we'll bring that forward to the board. We have a very low exclusionary discipline rate within the district, but the reality is we've got some disproportionality when you look at especially our African-American subgroup and the percentage of exclusionary discipline events within that subgroup. And as a result of that, we have to do some work in that area based on, on some state requirement. And there's some funds that are going to support that, but that's something we've been working on with you. So again, this was not for discussion, but I just wanted to as well, as you're thinking about kind of these other plans, I wanted you to know some of the other stuff that's already, you know, kind of in progress and, and, you know, some of the things that strategically we're going to try to make room for within the budget this year.
Okay. A couple of questions or comments on that. Thanks for the discussion. Thanks for finding us and all the work that you're already doing and that are already on the parking lot. So we have five ring reports. We have the monthly financial report, it's attached, as well as the FOIA report, the Early Learning Center construction update, the board communication log, and the Citizen Advisory Committee report. We do have a CAC meet next Wednesday. Can you correct? Any questions for board members on those reports? Okay, any reports or board committee reports from board members? I know there was one attached, that was the HR Policy Committee. What's kind of, was the meeting behind the 33 policies tonight? Any questions on those or any other committees notes? Any other reports from board members?
I wanted to share with the rest of you an extracurricular SEL initiative that I've been getting involved with this semester. It's a program called Girls on Run, and it's a national nonprofit organization with the mission to inspire girls in grades three through eight to live healthier lives and become more confident using a fun, experience-based curriculum that involves integrating running and physical activity into the curriculum. So there are elementary and middle school programs that can run either the fall or the spring. It's an after-school program where coaches meet with girls twice a week for 10 weeks. And each week, there's a specific curriculum piece that's delivered and then there are active pieces and some running practice. They have focus areas like managing emotions, resolving conflicts, intentional decision-making, and the running practice all culminates in the goal of running high payers at the end of the season in May. So I became involved as a psych coordinator at Emerson School. Emerson has been involved with this program in camps, but hadn't been doing it for a while. And I had seen a conversation come up on a parent or PTA Facebook post, wondering if I could come back and what that would take. And so I looked into it and offered to coordinate a program for them and helped coach that. We have programs also running at Bauer, Lincoln, and Pleasant Hill. Interestingly, Bauer, Lincoln, and Emerson have always been running teacher-based programs. Pleasant Hill, the whole time, it's been running there for over 10 years and it's always been like a completely good parent program there. But I've been contacting with all the coordinators at all those schools. And so we're actually kicking off the program at Emerson in the second week in March and hoping at the end of the season, high pay in May, that we'll get all of the district funding schools together. So we'll kind of celebrate together. But it's been really interesting to learn about the program. I've gone with coach training and they hit on a lot of the same SEL concepts that we've been talking about. They use similar, same terminology, they talk about connectedness, inclusive environments, and using trauma-sensitive behavior supports and that sort of thing. So to me, it's been really fun to take running, which is a passion of mine, and all this SEL stuff that I've been so excited to see go out in the district and, you know, finding a way to get involved with that. So it would be great if that could expand beyond the four schools that we have involved. This is, you know, I was bringing this in.
Thank you. Any other reports from board members?
Brad, can I just mention one other thing really quickly, the very last thing in your, your green folder that I just want to call your attention to. So as, as we move toward the conclusion of the Jefferson project, one of the things that we're having to make a decision around is the plaque that we'll be inside of, that is the school building. So really the composition of the board, there were two different boards, right? We had a board when the ground was broken on the building and then obviously we'll have a, have a current board when we do the ribbon cutting. Bill and I kind of felt it appropriate to recognize all nine board members on the building plaque without necessarily any distinguishment between are you currently on the board or were you on the board? And so this is kind of our proposal for what that plaque would, would look like if you guys are okay. So it does bring Jim Gambiani and Jim Roman onto that, that plaque. And we just kind of put everybody in, in alpha order if you're, if you guys are okay with that. Seemed, seemed appropriate since we kind of crossed the, the two boards, but I just want to make sure everybody's good with the evaluation.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Another topic for future discussion, we talked about is the master technology plan and the future of instruction and technology plan. Our next meeting is going to be the February 26th meeting hole, which will be seven o'clock at the SSC. Our next regular board meeting is going to be March 11th at 7:00 PM. It'll be one of those at high school. Any public comments on that? No, no public comments. So there being no further action coming for the board in open session. I will move and ask for a second to adjourn the meeting. Do you have a second?
So would.
Second by Mrs. Putin. Let's write all papers, say aye.
Aye.
Is that right?
You did?
Yeah. Anybody opposed to adjourn the meeting? Okay, the meeting is closed.